Buenas noches, mi nombre es Heidi Rodríguez.
Good evening, my name is Heidi Rodríguez.
El motivo de estar aquí es porque soy padre, tengo dos hijos en la escuela Sherwood.
My reason for being here is that I'm a parent of two children at Sherwood School.
También pertenezco al concilio y soy presidenta del club de padres.
I'm also part of the site council and president of the parents' club at the school.
También estoy aquí con varios padres que hemos venido.
I'm also here with a group of parents supporting.
El motivo de esto es para decirle gracias a Dr. Lusa, gracias por todo lo que ha hecho por los estudiantes, porque todo lo que ha hecho lo ha hecho de corazón, lo hemos sentido que es de corazón.
We are here to express our thanks to Dr. Lusa, he has done a lot for our students and we know that everything he's done, he has done from his heart for our students.
Lamentable mucho su decisión pero respetada y triste a la vez, pero sabemos que todo lo que viene es un bien para ustedes.
We regret his decision and it saddens us, but we respect it and we know that everything you have coming for you will be well pursued.
También quiero saber que estamos muchos padres pendientes de la nueva elección de superintendente y que tenemos los ojos bien puestos en la persona que van a elegir.
And we also want to let you know that we are on top of the process of searching for a new superintendent and our eyes are very peeled to see who will be the next superintendent of this district.
Somos pocos padres los que estamos aquí pero atrás de nosotros hay bastantes padres que queremos el benestar de nuestros hijos y de los hispanos sobre todo.
There's only a few of us parents here tonight, but there are many, many more that are not here that are also supporting the cause and we want the best for our children.
Con esto concluyo que queremos una persona bilingüe que esté al tanto de nuestra comunidad, de nuestras necesidades, nuestros hijos.
I am concluding with the request that we search for somebody that's bilingual that is in tune with our culture and our community and the needs of our children.
Las agencias que están presentes ahorita tómenos en cuenta como padres porque estamos aquí para alzar la voz en el momento necesario.
And we ask that we are taken into consideration because we would like our voices to be heard.
Gracias Dr. Lusa de corazón, las puertas de nuestras escuelas siempre estarán abiertas para ustedes y como padres de corazón te lo digo gracias por todo lo que hizo y luego veremos pronto, todo lo que hagan será para bien, gracias, buenas noches.
Once again, Dr. Lusa, thank you very much. The doors of our schools will always be open for you and we appreciate everything, thank you.
Next, please, your name?
Yes, hi, good evening, Dr. Lusa, and for members, my name's Maria Jeanine and I'm a parent in the district, I have two children at Lincoln Elementary School in the dual immersion program as well as an active community member, advocate for dual immersion education and a member of the garden committee at Douglas Elementary School. I'm just here tonight to kind of echo what people have already said about the importance of having all stakeholders at the table in the search of the new superintendent and, you know, I implore our board members to look at the cultural background of who it is that we're going to put in charge of this very important job. Knowing that we have a very diverse culture, as we can see here tonight, the linguistic differences within our own district are extremely relevant to this position and it needs to be addressed and that should be a very big priority because we're balancing between Spanish speaking as well as other languages and English speaking and somebody that fully understands that diversity and appreciates the cultural differences and is able to bridge the communities together is huge. So I just really, I ask you please, look at, look for somebody who actually has proven track record in working with diverse groups, who has experience working with cultural differences and that understands our community, the dynamics in our community. I think that's an extremely important and very relevant set of skills that somebody needs to have in taking over this position. So we've got incredible amount of gifts coming into our district in terms of language. These children that are coming from bilingual families come with an asset. They come with Spanish already in their pocket. We need to honor that, we need to treasure it, we need to value that and the person that becomes our superintendent needs to understand the importance of that gift. And so I just implore you, please make that a priority, that whoever is in charge respects, understands and puts that as a priority when they become superintendent, thank you.
Next speaker, please, your name?
My name is Karina Morales. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Karina Morales and I would like to say a few things about the dual immersion program. I went through the dual immersion program as a father's elementary. The program has greatly contributed to my personal and academic successes. Not only am I able to connect with my grandparents and my roots, I can communicate with my other family members and it also gives me a profound academic leverage because I am bilingual and bilingual. Knowing both English and Spanish gives me the opportunity to communicate with teachers, counselors and class members to better understand one another. In addition, I am able to help classmates who primarily speak Spanish and struggle in courses which require a high level of English skills. I am confident that my skills will continue to benefit me throughout my academic career and during my occupational endeavors. I would like to thank the board for giving me the time to speak. Furthermore, I would like to thank you for your continued support of the dual immersion program and I hope you will continue to support this program for many years to come. The future of Salinas depends on more bilingual and bilingual people such as myself. It is for these reasons that I would ask the board to consider a new superintendent who will continue to support and value bilingualism and bilinguality in our schools, thank you.
Buenas noches señores, miembros de la mesa directiva, señor Juvenal Lusa, buenas noches.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Lusa.
Quiero dar las gracias al doctor Juvenal Lusa, soy madre de la escuela Los Padres y vengo a decirle que tengo cuatro hijos, que tres son bilingües.
I'm here to thank Dr. Lusa. I'm a parent of four students from Los Padres, three of which are bilingual.
Y me gustaría que si el doctor Lusa no revoca su renuncia, que buscara una persona multicultural ya que el 87% somos latinos.
And if Dr. Lusa, you're not willing to consider revoking your retirement, all that we ask is that we seek a superintendent that is multicultural and that understands our students, being that 87% are Hispanic and English learners.
El 35% de los 87 son, hablan otros idiomas.
There's another 35% that speak other languages.
Y me gustaría que la persona que estuviera con nosotros pueda hablar más de un idioma porque la comunidad latina tiene muchas necesidades.
And I would like the next superintendent to speak more possible languages because our Latin community has a lot of needs.
Y que fuera de aquí de la región, que conozca nuestras necesidades como estudiantes, como padres.
And that he be from this local region so that he understands us as parents and our students as well.
Para que nuestros hijos, nuestros hijos tengan una educación amplia y mucho mejor.
So that our students have ample education and a much better one as well, thank you.
Thank you, next, your name?
Muchas gracias.
Sorry about that.
Perdón, perdón. Buenas noches, miembros del board, mi nombre es Cristina Mejía. En primer lugar quiero darle las gracias al señor Dr. Lusa por su trabajo.
Good evening, my name is Cristina Mejía and first of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Lusa for his work.
Y por el apoyo que hemos recibido los alumnos en todas las escuelas que él ha representado. Sabemos que él hizo una decisión y se respeta, le damos las gracias otra vez, hizo un excelente trabajo.
And for the support that he has given our children and again, he has done an excellent job and we thank him for that.
Y vengo a hablar un poco de lo que los padres exigimos para el nuevo superintendent.
And I'm here as well to request our criteria for the next superintendent.
El doctor Juvenal Lusa como los últimos cuatro superintendentes.
Dr. Lusa, like the last four superintendents.
Tiene un PhD, es el nuevo representante, queremos que también tenga esto. Queremos que también esté preparado como él, como los últimos cuatro superintendentes que hemos tenido.
Like the last four superintendents in this district have held a PhD then we would like the next person to also hold a PhD.
Que sea bilingüe, bicultural y que además debe recibir en el estado de California.
That they be bilingual, bicultural and reside in state of California.
Y conocer de nuestra cultura porque nuestra cultura es muy amplia.
And understand our culture because our culture is, it has much in it.
Igual otra vez gracias doctor Juvenal Lusa porque sabemos que siempre hemos escuchado y tenemos las puertas abiertas en tu oficina, gracias.
And again, thank you, Dr. Lusa, we know that your doors are open for us always and thank you very much.
Thank you, next, please.
Hi, I'm Christine McQuiston.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm a parent of two admission partners and I just wanted to say that I come from a large pediatric practice where I work here in Salinas and we recently had our own nationwide search for a new pediatrician since we are a growing office and we looked for about nine months, looked at numerous pediatricians because we want the best for our kids and I know that many of the patients that come to our office would want the best doctor for their, for their kids. And so we did hire a new pediatrician in recent weeks. Actually, we found, we believe the best of the best, she's been actually a Ivy League graduate and so we're really happy to have her originally from Chicago and now am from North Carolina and actually loves it here. Just imagine how it would be, we told our patients, good news, we have a new physician, is excellent, is speaking all sorts of languages, but she actually practices geriatrics and so we're sorry, but we know she'll learn it, she'll learn pediatric, but right now she's actually a geriatrician. So it would be disappointing and so my point is that looking for the best, whether man, woman, red, yellow, black, white, whoever they may be, maybe look for the best when you look for someone who has a track record and the best for our entire district, no matter, no matter where they come from. And I'd also like to comment, I am from Miami, which the highly Hispanic area and grew up in the public schools with Spanish every year as an elementary school student, which gave a great foundation for me, I use Spanish every, every day and I'm not fluent, but I've been able to use Spanish every day in my office and I'm very, very proud of that and it was because of that foundation that I had in my elementary school years of having Spanish very early age. And I always wondered why in this district we have the virgin, which I thought is wonderful, or nothing and what a wonderful legacy you could leave if, rather than, I know you'd like to have the entire district immersion, but actually have, delete the legacy of having Spanish in, in every, in every school and having, starting to have Spanish to introduce to every student in every school. What a fantastic legacy the board could leave, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Lusa, board, my name is Sylvia Pinedo Capuyan, I'm Roosevelt, bilingual, second grade and I just felt that I had to come after I saw a headline in the newspaper quoting me, Salinas City School District is not in Kansas anymore, so I see some attire in Dorothy's red shoes here. I need to list, and I provided that to our parents, the newspaper clippings that came out and I'm going to quote what I said and I would like you to find it and see if that is what was quoted by a Mr. John Henry. I said, and it was quoted in Spanish and in Sol, in Spanish and in English, Californian, Sylvia Capuyan, teacher at Roosevelt School emphasized the point, I think it's very important that whoever gets to be the next superintendent needs to know the culture, this is what we've been saying right now, of what we have here in Salinas, the culture. I'm hoping that we're not going to get someone from, I don't know where, Kansas or Wyoming, plus I guess the shoes, that has no idea of what we have here and then try to come in and start dictating, this is what bilingualism is, that's what I said. What was listed here on the newspaper by the gentleman Sean Henry, it said, "At the Salinas City Elementary School District Board Meeting on February the 10th, examples of segregationist mentality were on display again. One teacher expressed her support for the current superintendent, Juvenal Lusa, and then openly declared that any interested superintendent candidates from Kansas or Wyoming may not apply." I think maybe we need some common core here for this gentleman. My point is, from the very beginning, I think this is the gentleman that did the OJ Simpson, isn't this the picture of Robert Lee in Close Quarters, right there, I have it, he's here, da, 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 da. The aggression is on their tapes, they're welcome to see their own videotapes. And then it was proven that, yes, it was him, standing next to the AYP explaining it to his wife. Nothing was ever written on the paper, nothing was ever apologized, he never did apologize. Para los padres que están aquí de habla hispana, nomás quiero clarificar el documento que les di, esto cante, lo que yo en realidad dije, se encuentra bien en español y el señor Sean Henry que vino y habló que según sabe mucho, hizo alegaciones que yo no hice aquí y por eso se las traigo para que miren. La realidad es que él también se presentó cuando comenzó todo esto, enojado por apuro, por retratos, diciendo que Pablo estaba acá detrás diciendo, por favor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir? You can respond that privately with the other issue. Thank you, consent items, please, we're back to the agenda.
Move approval of the consent items?
I have a motion on the floor with a second on the floor, any discussion? None? All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Clarification, please? Let me back off a little bit, this is clarification question. I have a debate.
I just want a clarification, if there's an item on the consent item, can I ask the board to consider pulling it for discussion?
We have a motion, we have a second, unless you want to defer your motion to second.
That's fine, I'll resend my original motion. You have to get this second to resend.
Go ahead, courtesy, yes, go ahead. Which item is it?
Item number two, two A. Under the consent item is number two A, classified, classified position.
You want that rule?
For discussion if.
For discussion.
Or.
What's the question?
Well, I just wanted to mention on the particular position, CSEA recognizes the importance of hiring qualified employees for the district and CSEA understands the importance for district to have a six-month probationary period. CSEA has negotiated that for these probationary employees they would have an evaluation at the end of two months. This would allow employees the opportunity to pick up directions or new ideas from the supervisors that they work with so that they can become successful employees. There is an employee who has worked at various schools as a substitute for a year. This employee finally became permanent, took and passed the Safe Set Service test, qualified, then suddenly, one day, was notified that she was, that it was her last day. She had no evaluation, no clue, never told or given a hint that she was doing anything wrong and for this reason, CSEA does not agree with the decision to let this employee go. Please consider the decision of letting this employee go.
What are you speaking about? Yeah, food service associate, one.
I would respectfully request that the board go ahead and pull this item. I think this is not an appropriate venue to discuss this. So if the board wishes to pull item two A, I definitely am open to that, not having it discussed in open session. Especially not without the employee's permission to have that discussion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent counter but, but pull item two A for further discussion of the two employees at the next board meeting. Okay, so it's the second employee on consent item two A, report.
Do I hear a second? Still a second? All of the favor? Aye.
Just come from.
So, so pull for later discussion.
If I may, Mr. President, at this time we're going to put action items, you need to make a selection about the superintendent's search firm and following protocol, we're going to hear at this time the firm Costa Group and respectfully, I would like to ask the other firms to exit temporarily the meeting until your call. So A and B consulting, Salinas consulting, and H, wait, A, exit. If you can wait outside here. So we invite the Costa Group.
Good evening. We are the Costa Group, my name is Don Remley and I have with me also Patrick Sane and maybe before we begin, we could just introduce ourselves a little bit.
Before you do that, I'd like to remind people, remind them of the presentation. Says three up there, we're corrected. Take a breath, exhale. Okay, next, please.
Hey, I'll start by introducing myself, I'm Don Remley. I am a former superintendent, 26 years, my last year was, or my last superintendentcy was 22 years in Orville City School District and I've spent quite a few, quite a bit of my, my career working with Latina, Latino students. I was in La Fuente as a reading resource teacher, later in Baldwin Park out Southern California with about 95% of our students being Latino. I, if you know anything about Orville, Orville about 1985, 86, we got quite an influx of Mong students and so at one point about 30 of our students were Asian students. They, a number of them have moved out of our community at that one time but the last superintendentcy that I did that was similar to yours was Woodland last year. If you know anything about Woodland, you know it's a community very similar to yours but kind of north, northwest of Sacramento and there we ended up having quite a few individuals who were Latino who had all of the proper credentials educationally and we ended up actually placing a Latina superintendent there who has a doctorate from the University of Laverne. So we'd encourage you to maybe talk to Sam Blanco there, who is the president of the board and he, I'm sure would give you an excellent recommendation in terms of the work that we did there. I'm going to let Patrick talk a little bit about himself. Mister Board President, sent for by one marine to another. I was a superintendent in California for 30 years, more than half of that in multi-ethnic districts, including 11 years in the Vidalino School District, which was 98% Hispanic. So I'm very appreciative and sensitive to the speakers I heard tonight. I would assure you that if we were selected to do this search, we would do everything in our power to make sure that all aspects of the community are represented represented and have an opportunity to speak and we would also be very sensitive to finding somebody who would culturally match this school district, thank you. Probably not going to get through our whole PowerPoint presentation in five minutes but I will try to give you a little bit of background about us. Basically, our group is a group that has now 27 partners, six associates throughout the state of California. We do searches in the Southland as well as here in the, in the North State. When we, when we get involved in a search, all of our partners are looking for candidates. The, the search process is one that basically starts by involving a lot of your community and the community feels that they need to have a part in the process and we want to make certain that that happens. So Patrick and I will spend as much time as necessary to talk to as many groups as you have. You as a board would identify what those groups are, individuals. There's some obvious ones, the staff, parents, community, stakeholders, the city, any, any group that basically interacts with you as a, as a school district, the booster clubs and PTLs and so forth as well. But from that, we create a booklet and this is, this happens to be a booklet from Rockland. We, we did the search there two years ago. It's, it's normally anywhere from 25 to 30 pages or more and we also have an online survey that parents are able to, to respond to and we have it also in Spanish as well as, as well as English and I now have it in Russian as well. I don't think that that would fit in your community, but we do have it as well in other languages. But those surveys are important because from the surveys, from those discussions, we establish a profile of what you want in your new superintendent. Now, it's not what we desire, but it's what you desire and it's what your community desires. So from, from the booklet, we then meet with you as a, as a board and you establish for us eight to 10 characteristics, attributes, strengths that you feel you need to have in the superintendent. in the superintendent. And that could be anything from the academic preparation, to the cultural awareness, to bilingual status, whatever you desire. So after we go through the first phase, then basically, we advertise throughout the state for the individual. Now, most likely, the individual who will be your next superintendent is a person who, at this point in time, isn't even thinking, constantly isn't thinking of coming here. It's an individual who is successful where they are, and once we've established the profile, then we basically go to that individual or individuals, and we tap them on the shoulder and say, hey, you have exactly what they're looking for in Salinas, we think you should apply for the position. Now, we don't have a stable of candidates that we're trying to push upon you. We don't do that. We, we take the profile that you and your community have established, and then we bring to you candidates of each of that profile. If you're not satisfied with the initial slate of candidates, then we'll stay with you until you are, at no extra cost. So if, now, I've, I've never had one of my searches not be successful the first time around, okay? But if, if that happened, we would go ahead and continue to advertise until you, the board, are satisfied with the candidate, okay? So, how are we doing? You stopped me with his time. The, the final phase is one where we basically check the references on these individuals. We do background checks before we bring them to you. We want to make certain we don't have somebody come to your community who has baggage, been unsuccessful somewhere else, or, or basically has some kind of history that obviously would not make it within your community and would not meet your, your profile that you have. We did, we then prepare everything to your, to your specifications, you says your profile. So we check their background, we do all the interviews according to the profile that you've established, and in the end, you and your community should be satisfied with who comes because they will meet the profile that you and your community have set. Why don't I stop at that point and answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the board? Just a moment.
I have a lot of questions, but I guess we don't have time to ask all the questions. But what's the timeline look like, as optimistically as you could say?
Okay, I have a timeline here. I'm going to, I'm going to go through here real quick and show you where it is. Basically, May 25th is your board meeting, your last, second board meeting in May. The, the actual deadline for the applications is actually, let's see, supposed to be May 1, uh, May 1st. So the applications will be completed by May 1st, and we have basically three or four weeks there in terms of doing background checks, doing the interviews, and being ready with a contract on, for you as a board to approve down on the 25th. So that's assuming that everybody can, can make certain that their calendars match that, but we can, we can accomplish that skill. That would then give you five weeks of transition between, as I understand, Dr. Lusa's exit from your district with a new person coming on.
So when would you start the stakeholder meetings and the public hearing, and the public meetings to get input? Would you do that immediately? How...
Okay, again, the, you've got your phase one there, and you see there, the meet with employees and stakeholders groups, that would be between March 9th and the 13th. So we're talking, moving at a very rapid pace to meet that. But what we're looking at also is, you need to have some time for the applicants to prepare their applications, because as I told you, my, my impression here will be the same as in previous searches. The, the top candidates are not individuals right now, they're putting their applications out all over the place. They're individuals who will be basically focused on your, your profile. So what this does, from March 23rd to May 1st, this gives about five weeks for there to be advertising to go out to Ed Cal, to Ed Lane, and basically the work that we do in terms of tapping the shoulders of people that, that aren't thinking right now of taking the superintendence.
Then, last question, thank you.
Another?
I know, I know. Anyway, you, how many local, within the tri-county area, how many successful superintendent have you hired?
In this general area?
In this general area.
Would you consider Hayward and Morgan Park as being close enough here? Monterey Peninsula?
How about Monterey Peninsula, is that close enough?
That's closer, yeah.
Close enough. I did that search.
King City?
King City, we did that.
We did that search.
And Washington Union?
A few years back.
I'm currently doing the Washington Union, yeah.
Madera Unified was also one that Patrick did. Another, another district very similar to yours in terms of the cultural makeup of the population.
And Delhi in the Central Atlas. Which high? Delhi.
Delhi. You know where Delhi is?
Is there a range in there about your... I'm sorry, what? Trying to find out if it's higher or lower.
Well...
Good question.
Yeah, let me share on the expenses, two things. Number one, unlike a lot of our competitors, we do not bill you until we've completed the job. We have three, we have three basically payments that will be made. The first one is after we've completed the input session, and we've basically presented to you the book, and you have established the profile, so now we're going out for, for advertising. So at that point, we will bill the district for one-third of the expense. We, we bill you for the, for the second third, after we have presented you with a slate of candidates and you've interviewed, okay? And then the final one, we do not bill you until the, until the new superintendent's actually been hired, okay? Been given a contract and you approved it. Does that help you a little bit?
The rest is pro bono.
Well, you know, number one, number one, we don't make a lot of money doing this, and we don't really need to. But we, we do this as a service to school districts because we believe it's important for you to be able to get the best superintendents.
Let me see if I have board members have any questions. We'll keep it short. Yes? Any questions?
What is...
No? Kim? Your nurse? Okay? Okay. At this point, we're going to go to the next candidate, okay?
The public question.
Yes, good. We have two people that raised their hand about checking you out. You want to help me? Go. So those will be three questions, and we don't know all the answers at this point, but we're getting there. Okay, very good. Thank you. You're represented. And let's keep this short, because we have other people that are waiting to be presented.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
So I'll, if you could, actually, I'm probably going to have the same question every time, so maybe if one of the trustees, maybe Nate or Steven, if you can just synthesize my question, so I'm not having to come back up here and ask it every time. I guess I'm interested in, see, I come from a public safety background where I've held a job in public safety where there's very thorough, stringent background checks. So I'm wondering if the firms are going to require prospective candidates to sign release forms, open up their personnel file, look at the evaluations, talk to community stakeholders. Let's say, for example, you find, you tap the shoulder of the superintendent in Kansas, okay, just as an example. And, and this is a person who may not understand due process and the rights of teachers and workers as we treat them here in California, because it's a right-to-work state. So will you be talking to like the unions to make sure that they haven't had any problems with these, these folks during their tenure?
I think I heard your, your answer way before when you were doing the presentation. Go there. Well, I'm going to preface that with one thing that everybody needs to understand. Nobody, no search firm does a background investigation. Background investigations take a year and cost $10,000. Aside from being a former Marine, I was also a naval intelligence officer, and I was an NCIS special agent. So when we do, when we do a reference check, we do a reference check. The answer, do we talk to unions? Do we talk to people? Absolutely. When we call a reference check, we look at the references they give us, and then we go to what we call the tertiary references, which is anybody who lists a reference on their resume, we know we're going to get a good report from them because they've been asked to be on the person's resume. But what we do is we ask, okay, who else knows them? And then after that, we get to the third level. Plus, we talk to the president of the both unions, or whatever, however many unions there are in the district they're coming from, and we talk to the parent groups. We try and get a real feel. In other words, we don't want somebody, I don't want you, but, we don't want somebody who's been a failure in another district coming here to resurrect themselves. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Can I add something to that too? And Patrick was the obvious person that, you know, Dave responded to that because of his intelligence background. I want you as a board to know that you would see every application that comes, and we ask you as a board to basically go through them just like we do. In the process, you will look at some candidates that look very strong, and you'll say, why are they not on your list? Well, the reason is because we found something on them. We, when we, when we do the background checks, we will let you as a board know exactly who we talk to. Not necessarily by name, but the president of the board of this district, the county superintendent, the union president, whoever we're talking to, we let you know the status of the individual. And we also report out to you all the positives, anything that we see as a concern on our part, reservation that we have, or we let you know what it is that in our mind bounces this person out of the finals, okay?
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
We're going to go next.
I have a question. Um, excluding the...
At the microphone, please.
Oh, I have to go there?
Your name, please, again? Thank you.
Cynthia Schaefer. Excluding the specifics and the uniqueness of a school district, what are the top three leadership qualities of a school superintendent with your firm?
It depends on what, what the board and the community want. However, nobody ever says they want an untrustworthy candidate who won't communicate with the community and who is not visible. So usually, those come out very, in every search. So bottom line on it, it's always going to be trustworthy, good track record, visible in the community, and the ability to communicate and empathize. Those are generally given. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to share something with you that I think is very important, and that is the ethics of our firm. We, we have high ethics, and that's the reason why we're all working with the group. We think it's extremely important for us, when we're looking at leader, to find a leader that meets your needs. And I'm going to tell you that superintendents from one district don't necessarily make it in another district, and it's because they don't have the skills necessary to meet the, the specific profile needs of that district. And so, when you're looking at leadership, leadership changes depending upon what your needs are as a district, okay? Now, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Lusa, would you...
Please, Mr. Lusa, do you have to do...
Mr. Asadoua, welcome. You're the next one.
Good evening. We're present and board members. Lieutenant Lusa. My name is Gilbert Asadou. I'm with founding partners for A and B Consulting. Ruben Barron is the other founding partner. My last assignment was as superintendent of the Special Independent School District of 60,000 kids in West Texas, prior to that, 30 years in California. Ruben's last assignment was deputy superintendent of Anaheim Elementary. First, let me compliment you on having the kids here. It's always nice to start on a positive note, particularly when kids are being recognized. The kids will remember the experience along with their parents. And if you want to get something positive about parents and kids, they normally turn up. Second, it sounds like you already have a pretty good list to begin with. You heard it tonight. I saw it on the streaming when I watched the last board member or two, when you had meetings and people were providing you input. So you have some ideas with regard to what you're looking for in a superintendent. Let me make three observations, and then go into the process a little bit and talk about why you should select A and B, and what is so important about this selection of a superintendent. They are watching you. They're waiting with bated breath to see what you're going to do. When you select your superintendent, next to adopting your budget, setting priorities and direction for the district, it is the most important thing that a board can do. If you get it right, it's a big signal to the community about what is important about the future of 8,000-plus students that you have. It is also a signal about what you think is important in terms of what happens now and over the next three to five years. You had some input today, some folks agreed with each other, some of them didn't, and I think that's fairly healthy. But one or two of the things that they were saying, and I've heard this over and over again, we've done about 55 to 60 searches. Santana Unified being the largest at 60,000, and Brawley being the smallest at 3,000. Everywhere we go, we want to be included, we want to be listened to, we want to be part of the selection process. And I think they're asking the board for, please find a way to include us. And there are many ways that you can do that in your process. Some boards have interviews committees made up over a cross-section of people. Someone else mentioned this evening that you want to make sure that the process involves everyone, all of the voices in your community, all of the stakeholders that live and breathe and have some stake in Salinas Elementary getting ahead and moving forward with their kids. We also hear when we do searches during the process, let the attributes of what you want in a superintendent emerge from your process. Do not come in with a preconceived list of candidates or qualities. One of the things that we try to do is to make sure that we hear from teachers, from administrators, from classified, from all of your parent groups and organizations. What we try and do is hold up a mirror and find out what it is that you want, and we basically ask them that question. What would you like to see in the superintendent? We ask the board members the same thing in the collective and individual interviews that we do. And sometimes the board members agree, and sometimes they don't. But that's why you do the interview, so that you can compare notes. Once that initial phase in planning is done, and you've had input from all of the various stakeholders, we put together a group of consultants, normally Ruben and myself and two or three others, to come in and review all of the applicant material that is submitted. The process belongs to you. You own the material, you're in the process, and if you want to keep it all when we're done, it's yours. Some consultant firms don't do that. They in fact keep all the applicant materials. But we need to remember one thing, you're the ones paying for the service. So the process belongs to you. Third, once the consultants review all of the materials for consultants, we cut it down to a list of about a half a dozen people if we think meet your criteria. And then we do a little bit of investigating on our own. We interview them for an hour on the phone, all of them. We come back and give you a list of the ones that we think best meet the criteria that you have established. We also ask them, is there anything in your background, in your personal life, that may embarrass you or the board that we need to know about? Sometimes that question doesn't get asked. That's confidential information. Most of them are forthcoming, some have had some trouble. They've been bought out, there's been a conflict with the board president, there's been other conflicts with the unions, and they readily share that information. We keep that confidential, we bring back that information to the board, and it's up to you to decide, this is okay, we can live with it, or no, it's not okay. Sometimes the board accepts people as long as they've got a good explanation and a rationale for what happened, side problems. In other cases, the board said, we don't want any hassle, we don't want anyone with any baggage. So the qualities that you're looking for will surface from your process, and I wouldn't doubt that some of them match some of the input that you got this evening. Once the semi-finalists are suggested...